Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for coming again. We have a lot of things to give and a few more things going on. We will have the answer question session, so if you're happy, please ask them. And if you're not satisfied with the answer given, give somebody your name and number. We will be sure to try to capture that to give back to you. Somebody asked questions we still may not have answers to, but we certainly will go after them. A little change tonight on policies presented. A couple of months ago, I promised the Miss Moose Lake Committee that I would go into the coronation tonight and to the presentation to the grand marshals. And that happens at 6:30, so I'll be leaving right after this welcome. But my first concern was to be here tonight to kind of welcome everybody here and ask if anyone had any questions for me before I leave. Anybody? Well, that, welcome, and Chief of Police Bryce will take over from here. Yes, Governor can come up, please, start this with the grand. Appreciate it. Let us praise him. For God, as we continue to dry out to the sea and as the damage becomes more and more invisible in the inside of our homes, we pray that at the compassion in our community wouldn't dry up. Pray that we would continue to be inspired to become and help because so much help is needed. Pray that we remove us to acts of kindness, encourage the victims of this flood, and God can protect those who are working in our community to do repairs and so many volunteer hours. We pray in Jesus' name.
Thank you, Reverend. Want to thank you all for coming here. It's been a priority right from the start to try and keep everybody informed as best that we can. Let you know we're going to have another community meeting next Monday here at 6:00 PM. Right now, I just want to give you a situational update of what we've been working on. We met with Governor Dayton and key members of his staff on Friday. The main focus when we talked to him was the school and setting up a special legislative Every indication that we got that they are looking at doing that. Saturday, Senator Al Franken did come to town and we met with him. And he did tour the school with us and saw the extent of the damage. One thing about the school, they are making a lot of progress and we're really hopeful of the future of that. Debris removal is proceeding very well. It's been very busy with all the heavy equipment and all the trucks. And just a reminder that we asked that no debris be put on the curb after today is starting in on Thursday. That gives us time to clean up for the Fourth of July parade and festivities. The CIP crew has removed pretty much all the sandbags except for a few that are around the pump house and a few other ones that are scattered around town. That's pretty amazing. Couple dozen guys, you know, moved the 80,000 sandbags, so moving right along with that. The Fourth of July celebration and parade are going to proceed as scheduled. The parade will follow its normal route, and the route will be cleaned and rinsed by the fire department to ensure safety. PCA did not see a problem with any kind of environmental problems if it was down with us. Also, just found out today that AID days is a goal. We are going to do AID days. The school is very confident that the gym will be ready to host the event, so that's really good news. And also, the school is scheduled to be opening on time in September, and I'll have Billy, Joe, Steve come and talk about that a little later. Right now, we'll move on to the incoming considerations. Paul, are you going to speak up on behalf of the assessors?
Just two minutes.
Yep.
And thank you. An update from the assessor's office. All the cities in the county have had an appraisal going door to door at this time, and initial assessment was done in relation to the floodwater damage. If no one was home, the assessor left the door knocker. This week, starting this morning, they are getting out in the outline areas, the townships and rural areas. They will not be going door to door in the townships and rural areas. They're only going to those areas where people have called in to report damage. On that note, if you're aware of anyone who has had damage in the rural area, I would encourage you to encourage them to call one of two numbers, and this is for CAT 7 purposes, 384-9142 or 384-9144. They can also go to our county webpage, and one of the very first pop-ups is the assessor's report for damage. That will initiate a contact with the assessor, who will then get out to field and do that They'll make every attempt to get a hold of you before they come out, but don't be alarmed if they've come out to your property unannounced. For those of you that they've been to your property and they need to come back, they won't be making arrangements for you. Very likely, you need to contact them to let them know that if you're back in your home, you need to be appraised. Just a couple of quick numbers, and this is through last Thursday. They have not calculated all of the county and particularly not all of the city of Moose Lake. The number of structures that they've assessed, and this again is through Thursday, 488. Of those, 164 were impacted by the flood one way or another. Minor damage, 83. Major damage, 122. Ten were that were completely destroyed. The value of loss is over $4.3 million. Countywide, they've logged at this time 2,765 individuals that have either called or reported online that they have some damage. They've been out to visit about 2,200, this again through last Thursday. Of those, 850 were impacted. 146 of those were major, 75 homes destroyed countywide. The damage total is $14.5 million, two days. The county public infrastructure damage totals over $30 million. Out that, the county's road and bridge damage is in the neighborhood of $4 million. Now, on that note, were there any questions that you had at the assessor that I'm not able to answer? I'm glad to bring them back, so any questions? Yes?
So you said that 488 houses had damage and 164 were impacted? Is that what I heard?
Yes, keep in mind, this is from the assessor's property tax perspective.
What does impacted mean?
That in some way or another, there is some damage to the home because of the flood. Not necessarily structure, not necessarily land, but somewhere, it could be the furnishings. Keep in mind, from the assessor's perspective, the fact that a washing machine was ruined, and believe me, I sympathize with everybody here, the fact that the washing machine was ruined does not necessarily have a property tax impact, as opposed to the structure truly being demolished, the back doorstep washing away, things along that line.
Right. So then impacted means if you have water coming up from a sewer or a floor, is that impacted?
That's my understanding, because from what I'm hearing, that sewer backup that went hand in hand with this is causing damages as well, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir?
I don't believe I was contacted near the city. I was pretty much gone from my house. I wouldn't write it for the website. Will they come back to Moose Lake at some point?
Yes, and I know everybody feels like there's an urgency, but it's not an urgency that needs to be done today. They're trying to get out there and do that initial assessment on as many areas as possible, so don't be surprised if they don't do that call back Monday, Tuesday. It's very likely going to be later in the week. I don't remember how many teams they had go out this morning. Last week, there was 17, 18 teams. We've had representation from 20 other counties offering to bring in assessors to help with that. As we go during this week, that number's going to decline, and I believe that they're hoping to have the bulk of the county done before the end of the week, and then our local assessors will be taking care of it after this week.
Thank you, Paul. Next person I want to hear, Goose's Chamber of Commerce President Veronica. Could you give a quick update, and she also has to head up to Miss Moose Lake for an interview.
Hi, everybody. Just a quick update, most of the things, as I said, are still going to happen through the fourth. Couple of changes for the parade lineup. We have to move people instead of lining up at the arena. They're going to line up on South American Wayne, which is by the Chamber of Office. There's the flyover, which is going to happen at 1105, and the ice cream social is still on, and I think that's at the City Park.
Yeah, it's a little late.
Other than that, I think it's going to be under way for kind of big fireworks, so are there questions?
Where are the fireworks going? I don't know if I need a mic. Where are the fireworks going to be?
As of right now, they're still going to be shut off. From where they're normally shut off, you can see them if you're anywhere around Moonset Lake.
Just now, we are using the mic so that people at home can hear your questions too.
Is the parade route like last year or originally before that?
It's like it was last year, a year prior.
It's going past the Methodist Church in town here? It used to go straight down the 4th Street, and then last year, they changed it without telling anybody?
Yeah, yeah, it's the same as it was last year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you know if boat traffic and swimming will be allowed?
As far as I know, the speed beach and the lake have closed until further notice. They're still pending water results.
We did open up, we did open up the lake to boat traffic. We did get all the debris out, so they still advise most.
Is there anything else? Okay, other than that, come to the Miss Moose Lake Captain's tent, people. Thank you.
Moving on to current operations. Want to have our fire chief, Steve Tranquil, come up and talk about what he's doing with his boat.
Thank you. Fire Department's role continues to kind of wind down. We are pretty much finished with our pump operations in town. We did have a few stubborn ones last week, and I think we've kind of resolved those. So if somebody's still having trouble, please continue to be your side of it or call the volunteer services, and we'll get out there. But I think we're pretty much kind of handled everything. As you said, Bryce said we finished with the lake debris. That's not to say something might pop up out of the bottom. So be vigilant if you're out there in a boat. Be careful and let us know. We found out from Perry, we had some things maybe that we have to resolve out there, like a floating propane tank, so that would be nice to feel that. So be careful, be careful out there. Also, you've noticed we've been taking barriers down around town. We're trying to get back to the normal as we can be at this point. Again, the parade route is going to be the same as last year. We're trying to get that final cleanup. We're going to rinse the parade route. We're not going to fill up your basements again, okay? But we do need to try and rinse that. We're hoping Mother Nature is going to help us out a bit tonight. As sticky as it is tonight, that something coming tonight, believe it or not, that's kind of a good thing. Just keep it in perspective, please. So that's kind of where we're at. We're also out today moving those nasty porta potties around. We got rid of some of them. We moved the others kind of in conjunction with the parade route. If someone sees one that they, we took and they would like replacement type, please contact me afterwards, and we'll look at that because we have a pretty big stack of fireball right now, so. Really, I can't really think of anything else we're at other than we're just, it's a city's request. If they need something, we'll step up and do your, but that's about it here. Thank you.
Thank you, Stevie. They've just done absolutely wonderful job. We appreciate it. If anybody here's on the lake and does come across some debris, just please feel free to call the police department or the fire department, and leave us a message and do our best together over there. I just want to talk briefly on the police department. We have up there coverage to 24-hour coverage, at least through the summer. This last week, you probably have seen a lot of cold case squad cars in town. They were helping out and doubling up on some of our key times. And we also have had an extra person answering the phones at the police department during the day. I think tomorrow is our last day of having somebody scheduled answering the phones. But we do have an answer machine, so feel free to, if you have a question, you can certainly leave a message for me on Call Your Mag. Next, I want to introduce Mike Komla from Moose Lake Water and Lake to give an update on power.
Thanks, Bryce. Thanks, sir. Everybody able to be here again? We're getting it pretty much wrapped up. We've put meters back in homes. We have 19 meters left, so it's getting down there. There's still seven contractors running around town, so I mean, there's quite a few running around us. That's good, so if you need help, give them a ring. We did get banners put up down to the city, too. They ordered some. Just along our head lane and up full school park, we've got that finished today. Other than that, that's all the updates I have. We have 19 meters left. It's looking good. Any questions? 19 left. Yep, 19 meters left. So it's looking a lot better than it was.
My electrician is coming tomorrow to hook up my temporary box. Do I have to call ahead to come and put a meter in?
Your electrician will contact us with the paperwork, and we'll get it all turned in.
I've heard a lot of quick starters. I've heard you're doing a lot of minority technical work. Do I need paperwork to fill out because all I see is contractor forms? I've heard that I have to fill out some sort of application.
Do you have a meter in right now? Do you have electricity?
I have nothing.
You have nothing. The first step you're going to have to do is get ahold of a contractor to assess your damage, so you can put your meter back in.
Okay.
Once you've done that, you can do the work yourself after that, but you still have to have a state inspector come in after your work is completed.
So basically, you're saying I just have to do the work and then have to stay inspected and good to go?
To get your meter back and get temporary power, you will have to have a contractor come in and assess the damages. Did I answer that right? If you do have any questions after this, you can get ahold of me at my number, 218-455-4100. We're always around to answer questions. Give us a reason you need me help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mark Serber from the Gas Company of Minnesota Energy Resources. Just a little update on the meter situation in our regulators. Every house that flooded or the water ran above the reg and meter, we've replaced them already. So every house that was underwater or basement flooded has a new gas heater and gas reg and later on. And what we're waiting for now is to have the inspector go in and contractors go and put a new water heater, and they'll range in, and we'll come and turn the gas on. They don't have to, you don't have to wait to have the furnace put in. You can do, you can have a gas turn on if you have a water heater to range there. That's what I got from the base here. Any questions?
I don't know if my heater has been changed or not, because I'm underwater in the back there at 209 U Street.
Your meter and reg haven't been changed, though.
Yeah.
Yes, so they just, you just got to get it inspected, and we'll come in and turn the gas on.
I was just wondering if the water heater is, well, it's damaged because it was underwater and hasn't been moved yet, so you won't come and turn the gas back on for a hot water?
Like if your water heater was underwater, you need to have that water heater replaced. That's, I've been asked, that's coming from the inspector.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Mark. You had talked to me this weekend about if we needed our meters replaced, that there's a valve that we need to get installed, and the company said that you're able to do that right away. When supposed to call you guys to let you know and put that in? Or how do I go about that process of getting the valve done?
Contractor, your plumbing contractor will put that valve in. Our company does not put them valves in for you. So, I mean, if you're able to do it yourself, you can do it yourself and have it inspected by the inspector. Otherwise, you can have your heating heater do it for you. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks a lot to Spencer's help to come up from the street.
Thanks, Bryce. There's good news on the sewer front. Two of the three main sewer pumps were pulled out on Thursday, taken to an electrical rebuild shop in Superior, and cleaned, dried. They call it a shake and bake, and new grates are installed, and they should be ready by this Thursday to be reinstalled. And also, before we fire those up, they'll have to have the sand and the wet ball backed up that came through the line during the flood. And then they'll avoid excessive water in the impeller if that sand got in there. As of Sunday, the lift station on 7th Street by the wall field is running on its own, so things have finally started catching up now at that end of town, which infiltration's a super bad problem. Also, we have, we need some parts in from, we're trying to get parts from Milky Electric, who carry the Allen Bradley brand, that heart control panel is made by. And the guy that was working on getting those parts for us today, I guess our electrician said when he called later today to talk to that guy, he's been fired, so they've got another guy working on it, and maybe tomorrow we'll get some parts coming that way. Also, anybody who's going to be marching or walking in the parade, watch out for puddles because we probably won't get a chance to get them filled on the parade route the way things are going, so enjoy the parade. Thank you.
Do you have a question, Bryce?
I have a question about the sewer. My sewer goes down, but it goes down so slow. I mean, it takes a long time for it to go down.
You should probably look at getting a rotor rudder. Where is the water set? You should probably look at getting a rotor rudder in there, maybe some crud maybe got in your sewer pipe. Because sewer mains are working well in that block, so could be on your line.
I did something to follow up real quick with the parade route. This year, because of the floodwaters and everything, we did make a decision that the fire department is not going to throw candy out to the kids this year just because of the risk of contaminants and that. We're going to rinse, but we just can't be entirely sure. So just kind of bear with us this year. And we did have an activity at the park with the truck, and we're spraying spongebob and all that with the kids, and we're right now trying to find an alternative place. We'll try to stay away from the lake as long as we can until we get our water coming back, so we'll try and get an alternative location, but because of right now, we're not having that.
Sure. We're going to ask that anybody in the parade not to throw candy this year, just so there's no risk of any kind of contamination with kids picking up candy that have been on the ground. Fire Department also has an event where you can shoot a hose at a spongebob carrier, and they're trying to find an alternative place to set that up, so. On a good note, I forgot to mention that the fireworks, this is going to be the biggest and best showing of those that we've ever had. They had some more donations, and it's going to be a good show, so. Next person I'd like to introduce is our city administrator. Actually, before that, let me skip down. Todd Taylor from Samaritan's Purse. They're coming and helping a ton of people with cleanup and disinfecting their house, so if you want to come up and give a quick word of what you do and if, how you can be reached if you do need help. Yeah, they came up here with a big semi-trailer and also a big shower trailer to do their best to help everybody get cleaned up. They go around the whole country doing this, and they're very experienced, and we really appreciate this.
Thank you, Chief. Samaritan's Purse is here in town for as long as needed.
Samaritan's Purse is here in town for as long as needed helping with the sanitation of homes as well as the farm cleanup. I know there's been a huge outpouring of volunteers in this community and across the county. But I know there's many that still have some shoe rock in the basements. You're worried about the possibility of contamination from the sewage and things like that. And we're using a broad spectrum antimicrobial solution called Microban and/or Shockwave to treat those, the studs, the walls in the basement. To kill that, the possible mold and other things that were in the water. We do this free of charge. We've done it, been treating houses after mold since Katrina and things like that. We're set up at Covenant Evangelical Church. You're welcome to come by and see our equipment. If you need help, we can, we can certainly take that request right there at the church. You can call us at four eight five four seven three seven. Or you can use United Way two one one and just tell them that you need your home sanitized and we'll be glad to help with that. The other service that we're providing, we brought a shower trailer in for our volunteers that are coming in from all across the country. Drove by where they had the fire shower set up a few nights ago and saw volunteer firemen after working all day and letting their homes. Having to sit out there with a shower trailer. I know they were happy to do it. We made the offer to just let everybody use our shower trailer so they'd be open 24 hours a day. They took convenience to be able to shower. So they're open, they're at the back of the gym at Covenant Church. And that's located right off of Floss. Floss Boulevard. But anyway, that's a place. You know where I'm talking about. Headed out to the city everywhere. We just want to be here to serve the community. However we can help, whether it's finishing up the girding of your basements or your homes or anything like that, we're just here to help. And we also have the Milligram Chaplains with us here to provide spiritual and emotional support for you if you just need somebody to talk to. A shoulder to, to cry or a hand to shake or somebody to just spend some time with you. They're here with us as well. So this is Brian Johnson. He, he's actually from Wisconsin, just across the river. So he doesn't have the same accent I have. Thank y'all for allowing us to be here. You've got a wonderful town and, you know, we've been in a lot of places from north to south and east to west and all across the world. And this is one of the most welcoming, community-minded places I've, I've been in a long time. Your community needs to be applauded for what you've accomplished in a little bit of a week.
Thank you guys very much for, for coming and doing what you're doing. Again, there, there is no charge and from what I hear, they do an absolutely wonderful job. So I encourage people, don't be ashamed or afraid to call and ask for help because that's, that's what they do. Mark, well, seeing our city administrator, gonna take over and talk a little bit about the recovery efforts that are going on and also give you some more information somewhere.
Okay, just a little bit about the recovery. Remember to try to stay off the streets as far as the party goes until they're able to get the debris out. As far as pickup goes, there will be pickup tomorrow. And then there will not be pickup on the fourth and then pickup will resume again on Thursday. As far as the lake goes, I just got off the phone with Heidi Koning from the pollution control agency. She said that they're doing fecal polyform testing, to be specific. On Higginmore Lake and, excuse me, who said lake, in about 12 different places. Right now, the fecal polyform pumps are high near the beach because that's the area where the sewer went into the lake, but again, in layman's terms. And so the beach is gonna remain closed until further notice. The overall condition of the lake is better than the beach area though. Heidi said that the fecal polyform pumps taken in other areas of the lake are, are a lot better than they are on the beach. So basically that's good news because hopefully in a short period of time the beach area and the entire lake will, will get cleaned up. So they're gonna test again on Thursday and they're gonna probably test every once or Friday, once a week now on. So we'll keep that, you know, they'll keep in contact with us. And the, the lake, like Bryce talked about, is basically open, but there's a no-wake zone right now. As far as, again, looters, we've talked about that quite a bit. I can get into that anymore. Volunteers can register at Covenant Church with the Samaritan's Purse personnel. Flood relief center information, please call two one one if you have any needs related to flood. They have quite a bit of different information there. The state is gonna, for five days starting on third, on Friday of this week, is gonna operate into what are called state disaster recovery centers. These centers are set up with several state agencies. And the reason they're there is for homeowners with affected, in other words, damaged property, to go there and get information on different programs that may be available to you. And there's, I, I urge everybody to try to go to these because they're, they're blood and everything. I've been told there is gonna be quite a bit of information there. The other part of it too is they're gonna have homeowners register, which I've been told will help next Monday. Not so much with the P M, but with some of the non-disaster declaration-related programs like Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, weatherization, basically state programs. The nearest, there's two of these centers that, that are in close proximity to Booth Lake. The nearest one would be Barton High School and the second one would be Willow River School. They're gonna operate, and there should be some flyers in the back that say when they're gonna operate. But they'll start Friday. They'll be open from one to seven, Saturday and Sunday, and Monday they'll, they'll be open from nine to three. So I would try and urge anybody with affected property to try to go at one of those times to the centers because I do think that it'll be helpful. On Friday, we had a meeting, a region-wide meeting at the Duluth Law Enforcement Center. And the governor was there and a lot of the different state commissioners were there. And the state commissioner of housing did say that they are gonna make resources available that are not income-based. Because a lot of their programs normally are based at low, low moderate income homeowners. So they are gonna open up in their reserves. They've got some specific money targeted. They're gonna open up to homeowners. I don't know as far as grants and loans and those kind of things, but they are gonna make resources available. So I would urge people to try to, to go to one of those disaster recovery centers. And then I have a few other quick notes. Contractors, again, we're still asking the contractors to register with the city or register with Duane. We have a list of contractors at the city offices. And these are, again, contractors that have indicated they're willing to work in the area. And we have their name and address and license number. And again, this is not a, any kind of warranty or any kind of licensing from the city. The gas, gas stuff has been talked about by Mark. I won't go through that again. Is there a representative from the school here? Okay, I would like to have you come up and just talk briefly about the status of the school.
Good evening, my name is Billy Justin and I'm representing the school districts today as they're actually in a meeting right now with a potential contractor. So we have some good news. We feel like last week we shared with you our frustrations and what we were dealing with at the school. But we are feeling like we'll have school, but not September fourth. We've talked to a couple contractors who feel like that's a reasonable expectation. And so that is the plan. So if you've heard rumors about us sending children elsewhere, you don't have to worry about that. We will welcome them into our school and we will meet those needs. And we also, Bryce talked about it a little bit, but we will, we are planning to open our doors for eight days. We feel that's important to part of our community celebration in this way. And the gym was not affected. Over the cafeteria, we're just using that for storage right now. For that, we did have to move, but we have a plan in place to, to open that up too. Also, in the back of the church, as you go up to the arches, there is just a press release that we put out today. Just kind of giving general information about what is going on with the school. We have a crisis team that is in place that has met to talk about more than just the building needs. We've talked about what are the needs of our students and our communities and our family in our community. And in terms of our school and our staff and our educational needs as well. So we have a team that's working to address all of those needs while our administration works on our building needs too. So we have a letter that's going out to families within the next day or two. That'll have some more information for families as well. But most of that, again, is out in the press release that's out there in the gathering space too. Do you have any questions coming in at this point?
I would like the volunteer to go to the school if, if possible.
That would be lovely. We just, we're so early in the stages of what needs to happen next. We haven't figured out how to engage that piece of the community yet. And we're very thankful we had volunteers in helping move items out of the flooded areas. And at some point, that's all gonna have to go back. So we imagine somehow engaging the community with that too. So I appreciate, definitely appreciate that. And we'll get it to you. Anything else?
A lot of the forms that Mark was talking about, we located the box of those forms. And so we spread them out on the table that were coming in to the fellowship hall there. So check that table out for all those numbers and that type of thing.
Joe?
Yes, hi, my name is.
We have, here at Hope, through Lutheran Social Services, have made connections. So we have Camp Noah coming to our community, I believe it's August nineteenth. It's a Monday anyway. It's Monday through Thursday and it's for kindergarten through sixth grade. This normally costs $300 per kid. They are taking the price down to $100 per kid. And after I was on the phone with someone, a man walked into my office and gave all the money that we need to have 50 to 60 kids come to camp. So it will be here that weekend. I can give you more information on that. And we're also looking at briefing and visiting through Lutheran Social Services for adults in the community also, but that hasn't been discussed.
Could you please include us in that because we are crisis teams to talk about that need and what role this is to play?
You bet.
Perfect, thank you. Also, in terms of community ed activities through the summer, if you sign up for any community ed activities and if there's going to be changes or cancellations, our community ed director will make sure to let you know. So if you don't hear anything, assume that it's planned as normal. Another goal that we have is to have our kindergarten rooms ready for our kindergarten camp, which tends to be the second to the last week in August too. So either our kindergarten is being a little bit early too. So, so those are definitely our goals and we will keep pushing those needs too. Anything else for me? Thank you.
Just a few more things. General questions, the public can continue to call the PD at four eight five eight four oh four. Building contractor, again, as I said earlier, information's available at City Hall. Food services are back now at Hope Lutheran through Saturday. The hours are eight AM to six PM except for Wednesday, July fourth. No meals will be provided on that day. Just a reminder again to call your local reps about the special sessions. Extremely important that we get that, especially for the school. I think that's probably gonna be front and center. But I think also for, you know, just trying to get paid for, you know, homeowners and for the city for infrastructure. It's extremely important for the county. So I just have a couple other quick things. If you're a homeowner, you can register with Paula Danowski about your time. Apparently, if you, the time that you put in cleaning your house can count toward our volunteer money, volunteer time. We'll keep track of it. The team that gives us credit of, I think it's $10 an hour. So the more registered hours we get, the more money we're gonna have to show. Or, you know, in kind is what I'm trying to say, that we're gonna have to show toward our 10% of our overall income. Unless the state opens, the purse drinks more, I think we're gonna have fuller breath for that one. So anyway, a couple other quick things. Again, we talked about the, we talked about the lakes. We are looking for volunteers to help clean the arena. If you're interested in that, starting tomorrow, call Alan Nelson, who's the arena manager. I've got a number here if you wanna write that down or you can get it from City Hall tomorrow. It's three eight zero eight eight two five. Just leave a message with him. We had a, we did have a lock-through on Friday with our insurance folks. And it was, it was kind of an eye-opening experience, to say the least. And one of the things that I wanted to just bring up really briefly to kind of help me squelch rumors or things that may come up is some of the city facilities that were looked at, what it would be in the arena, which sustained very heavy damages, most of you probably are aware. We don't know the extent of the damage yet, but we found out that the arena is in the flood plain and they had it classified as such. And so our insurance is gonna cover it. Now, the city only has half a million dollars of coverage, so it's not likely we'll be able to cover it with all the other losses we have in the big picture. It's probably not gonna be that much different, but it was kind of disappointing anyway. And we're still, there's more engineering testing that will be going on hopefully this week that hopefully will get us a better picture of the condition of that arena. Also, the campground sustained quite a bit of damage. The campground's gonna remain closed until further notice. And this isn't so much the city park, but it's the beach and the campground itself. The whole electrical system of the campground was compromised. So the whole electrical system or the, you know, campers that come in, the seasonals, where they plug their campers in, water holes, has to be replaced. So that's gonna be an extremely expensive undertaking, to say the least. So, and then the last thing I just wanted to say, the next meeting will be six PM Monday at Hope Lutheran Church. And with that, then I guess I'll just open, open up to questions, Tom. Okay, Tom Hall, our Cal Flood Commander, wants to talk to you briefly.
Hi, I'm Tom Hall. I have a little bit of background in property insurance, only about 23 years, which I quit on January first because I was sick and tired of dealing with insurance companies. But that's one other story. But from what I've heard is that there are a lot of people, there are some companies where the agents are just coming out and writing a check for sewer backup. It's been very well documented that this loss, that the sewer backup preceded the flood. Today I heard that there was one company that was out there that denied 100 claims based on the fact that the flood came first. If you are in that boat, we were talking to Senator Franken. He said, by all means, if you have complaints, contact Minnesota Department of Commerce and the Minnesota Attorney General's Office. And complain vigorously because the state of Minnesota will start looking at these companies and making sure that it's taken care of. It was almost 24 hours before the peak of the flood that we lost the sewers. So the sewers were first. There are lots of insurance companies out there that have already written checks. And if your company is one that has denied your claim, that you need to contact Minnesota Department of Commerce and make a complaint and the Attorney General's Office.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Tom, this is exactly what I was gonna bring up tonight also. That at some point as a group, we probably even want to get together. Those, and document those people that have insurance, property insurance that the company has paid and those that are denying it. We have sewer backup protection. As we heard on Saturday, Senator Franken, Representative Hill, Senator Laurie, we're all there. And we'll, the state will probably use the attorney general to help us out. As an individual, we may say we don't have much power, but maybe collectively, we have a lot more power. And that was my only concern there. That was my bring up tonight. Thanks. Thanks.
In my, I did a lot of work in St. Peter during the tornadoes in 1998. There were a lot of issues regarding code upgrades in the state of Minnesota. If you have replacement house insurance, they always bring your house up to code when you have a covered cause of loss, being fire or winds. Water is a different thing. You know, a flood is not covered, groundwater is not covered, but sewer backup isn't a covered cause of loss, but they cap that at either $5,000 or $10,000. So basically, what happens is, if they tell you no, most people will just turn around and walk away and say, "Oh geez, I don't have coverage," and just leave it. Fight for it, because we, as the city, have documented how this loss occurred, what, in a very specific timeline. So we, you should be able to go and make a complaint and do it collectively, and it's gonna make a big difference. In St. Peter, what happened was, the Attorney, the Attorney General's Office got involved and got all the code problems taken care of through every single company that was there.
I don't know, in my basement, I don't know if the flood came first or the sewer backup came, anyway, stick down there, or do you stick down there so that we can make any difference? And you would think that flooding?
Basically, what we know is, we lost the sewer pumps, and the peak of the water was almost 24 hours later, is that correct? You know? Wasn't it about 24 hours that the water still kept coming out after we lost the pumps? Spencer? Wasn't that like, it would only keep up for around an hour after what you were talking about? In a nutshell, there are insurance companies that have paid, there are insurance companies that haven't paid. So if your insurance company hasn't made the claim and fought for your rights, I guess that's all I can say. In the city, we're saying that the sewer backup happened before the flood. Some options might be, it's almost impossible to tell, but we know when we lost the pumps, and we know what the peak of the flood was. And there are insurance companies that have already set precedent, that have written checks, where they just give their agency authority to go and write a check for $5,000 or $10,000 and just be done with it. But if you have any questions, or if you don't agree, what we're saying is, go to the Department of Commerce and Attorney General's Office and fight. And if there's enough people that do that, things might turn out the way. It's the lowest point, Mark. We follow the path of least resistance, and that is the path of least resistance. I mean, I'm not trying to say what happened first, I'm just, what I'm trying to say is that if you have an insurance company that didn't pay a claim, fight, fight for your rights to the Department of Commerce and Attorney General's Office, that's the only way that you're gonna get it taken care of.
I have a question here. Did I understand you correctly that if we didn't have sewer backup, but we got sewer in our basement first, to file a claim or fight for, with our insurance company? Because I just learned there's a separate endorsement policy for sewer backup that I give or don't.
Yeah, every single insurance company's policy is different, but I would say probably 90% of the insurance companies out there have a sewer backup endorsement. So first of all, you have to read your policy, see if it's there, and see if, and if it's not, then you have no coverage.
Then I have no, nothing. Okay. Thank you.
On the debris removal side, the county is paying for all the debris removal. So that, that has been taken care of, so you can either have it picked up curb-side, or you can actually take it to one of the transfer stations, one of the transfer stations in the county garage apart.
We've already had it picked up in the dumpster. I was told we need to submit the bill.
I'll meet with you, I'll give you a number, and you can talk to the debris removal coordinator.
Thanks, Tom. I also talked to an insurance agent today who represents the city, and she said the same thing, that they are gonna try to push, to get their, one of their companies, unnamed companies, to cover. And she said the same thing, that if you have the coverage, you can turn down and make sure you file a complaint with, I believe it's the Attorney General's Office. If you just Google Minnesota Insurance Commissioner, that, that office, there should be an dominant way to file that complaint, so. There's a question in the back.
I actually have two questions. As we all know, there's lots of rumors running around the communities, and I just wanted to see if you had any knowledge of the two I heard. Is there going to be good-use appliances at the Armory and Locating Mark? Is anyone aware of that?
There is supposed to be some appliances that have been delivered, you know, through some church organization. I don't really know the logistics, I don't know if anybody's got any information on that specifically, but I would call 211, I would start with that, and I know that's the initial way, and I tried that, and there was some question about that with work, and it was late, but I did try that, and it did work. So I guess I would start with them, and if not, I'm not really sure, just kind of, you know, maybe come back next Monday. If we do hear about it, we're certainly gonna let people know.
Yeah, we heard it was tomorrow morning they were going to be at the Clope Armory.
You could also just, I don't know, maybe call, like, the City of Clope, obviously they might know, or maybe that would work.
And then there's also rumors floating around that FEMA has determined an amount of details here. Is there any truth to that?
No, there's no truth to that, and I wanted, I wanted to just be real brief about that. The president now has the flood request from Governor Dink on his desk right now, in a matter of speaking, and usually it takes two to three weeks. But there's two parts to FEMA, and one thing to remember is that there's infrastructure of public buildings, which is usually a more common FEMA declaration. There's also what's called ID and visual assistance. Individual assistance, there's no guarantee that there will be individual assistance, and I want to make it clear to people that there's a lot of variables that go into what people get, and they talk about, you know, there's limits of $30,000 to $40,000, but I'm not gonna say that that doesn't apply to people who have flooded basements, but it's really variable on the amount of damage you have, and I tend to think that when a house is completely destroyed more, is when those higher numbers come into play, so, you know, don't get your hopes up that there's gonna be tens of thousands of dollars from FEMA, because I don't know if there will be. I don't know if there will be any, but there will be other resources available. SBA will come in, I think, regardless. Of course, these are loans, they've managed some brands for low-income people, Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, Weatherization, and I'm not really excited about this system either, but it is what it is, and it's all we can deal with right now, so. I don't know what our chances are gonna be. I know with individual assistance, that they, when they look at the partially or substantially damaged housing, flooded basements, you know, really don't score real high, so. I'm not saying that they're not gonna give us the award or the region, but I just want everybody to be aware that there's no guarantee on this stuff, so we don't know what it'll be, either.
I have one more question. We think that our rental policies on our property, that the foundation has been compromised severely. We expected someone out there probably five days ago. Is there a few people that we could call to have them come out and check our foundation back there, so we don't wish, we're gonna go with the, with the low-gas house we have on our property?
Do you live in the city?
Yes.
I would call Duane Crace or Bruce Laurie.
That's who we've been waiting on, he was gonna come out the next day, and we would save him. Is there anyone else?
You could try Bruce Laurie.
Okay.
He's in the phone book.
Okay.
That's Tony Laurie's uncle.
Oh, okay.
So you could try him, too, and other than that, I don't know, you know, in size of contractor, who else could help him?
Okay, thank you.
Her name.
Mark, I don't know whether this is for you, or maybe Bryce can help us with it, too. Pine County, I think Pine County sort of fell off the map right now, but there's talk, or there was conversation between the sheriff and the Pine County Health Department, that Island Lake, Sand Lake, and Coffee Lake, and I know Coffee Lakes in Carlton County are supposedly polluted, and there's not to be any swimming or anything in the lake. I'm just wondering whether anybody knows about, anything about that, or there were sites put up about it, on Sand Lake and on Island Lake at the landing, about that, and they were torn down by somebody.
I heard about the ones on Island Lake, that's the first I've heard of sand or coffee. I don't know if there's somebody from the township that knows anything about that, from this township, are you aware of that at all?
Bryce, Clara Strang, who was called, who's the supervisor of Winterberry Township, and he was called, I believe it was either by the Sheriff's or Park or, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be fine, Tony, so, I can, we can try and check on it tomorrow, we're being collection open by some point.
Indeed, I did come to Winterberry Township Board, the members of the board, apparently. We do not know exactly what it said. I'm not a part of the Winterberry Township Board. The rumor is now that, quote-unquote, "We can swim as long as you shower afterwards," and it did include Sturgeon Lake as well.
Any other questions? All right, well, once again, if you basically have any questions, feel free to, just stop down with PD or call, or just call City Hall, or ask one of us. We don't know the answer, we'll certainly do our best to find it for you. But, or else you can go up to the Covenant Church, Paula Danowski and another social order are gonna be up there to answer any other questions also, so. It's our, one of our missions is to try and keep everybody as informed as possible, so. But thank you all for coming, and we'll do our best to keep you updated, so. Thank you.